Evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ken Smith. I'm the mayor of the city of Vader. It's my privilege to call this regularly scheduled council meeting with the Vader City Council to order at 6:05 PM. And would proceed with the roll call which we will invite our city clerk to conduct.
Present.
Mark Fenison?
Present.
Joe Schei?
Present.
Kevin Flynn?
Present.
And Justin Olson has called in that he will not be able to be here tonight. And Mayor Smith?
Present. Okay, in spite of Mr. Olson's absence, we do have a forum, so we'll proceed with our meeting. And would, uh, we'll proceed with the invocation, which is our customary practice in the city of Vader. And so, it would be my privilege to offer that invocation to the mayor, and would invite all of you to join with me in prayer. Our most kind and gracious heavenly father, we humbly bow before thee as a city council in gratitude for the great honor and privilege which is ours to serve the residents of this community. We would ask thee to bless each of us with wisdom and inspiration to apply thy will and wisdom in the application of the decisions which will be made this night, and that the decisions we make would be of greatest benefit and good to the residents of this wonderful community. We're mindful of the great freedoms we enjoy in this free land, and for the privilege we have to invoke thy blessings in such public meetings. We do our very best to represent the will of the people, and that the residents will be blessed through our efforts. And we pray for these blessings, and do so most humbly, and in the sacred name of Jesus Christ, amen. So, with that, thank you. We will now invite all present to please rise for the flag of allegiance. And I would invite Mr. Flynn to lead us in that.
Flag of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, we're a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, we'll proceed with the mayor's report. And I'm pleased to remind the council members and the members of the public that the city of Vader has been selected for the third year in a row as a recipient of the volunteer individuals who are participating in that annual event, which is, to remind you, was an event initiated by President George Bush after the tragic events of 9/11. So, it was designed as a commemoration of the sacrifice of those Americans who died in that terrorist activity. So, we're pleased and grateful to have whatever service is brought to the good of this community. We do have three projects that are emerging, some of which are somewhat modified from our previous conversations about it, but just so that you're aware. I think our main focus is going to be a chipping event, but we're going to see if we can access through renting, perhaps from one of the rental agencies up north, a large chipper that, I think they call it a big mouth chipper. If we were back home, we could take large quantities of the pile that's over by the entrance of our waste treatment pipe and dump it into the mouth of it, and it just chews it up. If we can get that, that would make quick work out. The second project is re-deed along 506 and other select locations, over by Warden Park and some of our side streets. And lastly, we're contemplating doing some blackberry vine trimming along Park Street.
No kidding?
Yes.
Well, I was starting to get on the city because it was scratching the paint on it, picked up as I went around.
Well, alright, well, it's a point happened where that's in first. But, so, we'll see how many we can get with clippers, but we hope we'll make the difference. That's good. So, those are the three projects at the moment. We will begin at nine. We'll invite all the volunteers to show up at Warden Park, and we'll go until approximately noon, at which time we will provide hot dogs and chips and drink for all those who participate. So, those of you present in the audience and council members, feel free to spread the word, because it would be most beneficial if we could entice some of our Vader residents to join with them, to swell the numbers somewhat. But we will be putting advertising on the board there on the city building. Do we have a comment from the member of the public? Would the council care to entertain him?
Sure.
A comment?
We did not mention the date.
Oh, okay.
I didn't know if you were.
No, mind-bird. It would be September 12th. It's a Saturday. So, Saturday, September 12th, at nine o'clock at Warden Park. The other item that wasn't printed, it just occurred to me, that I should let council members know if you aren't aware, that we do have a member of the state audit committee who's in town. She's, I think she's approaching day three tomorrow of our financial audit. So, we're hoping and praying that all goes well with those processes. It's a significant event. It would be one of those audits that would have an impact on our ability to reacquire our drinking water system.
Is this a regularly scheduled audit?
I believe they would call it that, although I think that we were caught somewhat by surprise.
We were what?
No, I'm getting a negative.
I wasn't caught by surprise.
Maybe the mayor was caught by surprise.
It was triggered by grant, federal grant fund expenditures. When you reach a certain point of spending so much in a year of federal grant money, it automatically kicks in that you need to have audit done. So, this is because of our two grant programs.
Sure. I personally hadn't anticipated that we'd have one until next year. But, we had an entry conference this morning, and I personally learned a lot about the processes involved, and I've learned that, but I won't take the time in the mayor's report with this. Perhaps in our next council meeting, after we've completed it, I'll share with you what she shared with us. So, that's that. I commend Jill and Diane for accommodating her documentary needs. They're going to do a wonderful job of ensuring that she has access to all the records that she requires. So, with that, if there's no questions, let's proceed with our agenda approval for tonight's meeting. And would invite council action to proceed.
I'll put a motion on the table that we approve the agenda as written for 8/13/2015.
Heard the motions, but it might Mr. Flynn to approve the council meeting agenda as written. Do we have a second for that motion? Segment by Mr. Fenison. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Now, the approval for the minutes from our July 23rd city council meeting. Hopefully, you have a chance to read those minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as written from July 23rd, 2015.
Okay, Mr. Schei submitted a motion to approve those minutes. So, we have a second.
I'll second that.
Segmented by Mr. Wilson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? As she carries. Voucher approval. First half of August 2015 expenditure totals, plus the two you've had a chance to review.
Do you want to include the corrections on the voucher?
Can you use your little paper?
Yep, I got it written down. I'd like to approve the voucher correction for the end of July, eleven thousand, two hundred eighty-four dollars and ninety-seven cents, for a total for the month to July of thirty-nine thousand, four hundred ninety-seven dollars and sixty-two cents. And for the first half of August 2015 expenditure total of twenty-three thousand, nine hundred ninety-four dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Flynn, Mr. Flynn has submitted a motion to approve those expenditures as noted. We have a second.
Okay.
Segment again by Mr. Fenison. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? We're ready now for public comment. So, we have?
Yes, we do. Mike Parsons?
Okay, I'd invite, well, how many do we have?
Two.
Okay, just to remind those who made hesitation, we have three minutes, and this is the first of the block, so share your name, and then proceed.
Okay, my name is Mike Parsons. I moved in December of last year is when I purchased my home. One of the things that I was hesitant on purchasing was because of the name of Vader. When I found out that there was a chance of it changing to Little Falls, extremely excited. So, I'm trying to head this up as much as possible and talk to everybody. Everybody that I come in contact with, along with this editorial that came out of the newspaper, are talking about things like postage, mailing addresses, not getting the IRS tax bills, which, is that really a bad thing? But still, the mail will get to you. This is from the USPS. I called the post office, they sort the mail by the zip code. You can put Beaverton and put our zip code on it, and it'll come to here. So, it doesn't matter what name you put on your mail, it will get here because of the zip code. They also will put, the way that they sort them is by zip code, and then if there's an issue, it goes by legal name, which hopefully after November will be Little Falls, and then it'll say approved alternate names, and Vader will be on there. It's known as Vader, it's been known as Vader, they're still going to deliver mail. So, and the city council was told that before, and I keep getting feedback from the people that I talk to that says a city council member tells them that you're not going to get your mail, and you're not going to get this. And that is completely a lie. It's wrong, and I appreciate it if our city leaders will at least be honest about these things. The other issue was the road signs. There are about thirty-five road signs, and that is the number that was thrown out and is getting thrown out there. There's thirty-five road signs that have the name Vader on them. I don't think that we are planning on changing Vader Toledo Road and all of the signs for that. Vader Toledo Road will always be Vader Toledo Road. So, when you take down the street signs that have Vader, it takes it down to, I believe it was thirteen signs. Nine of those signs are just about due to be replaced anyway, so they're not going to replace them until after this vote is done. The other four are going to be able to get overlays on them. So, if there is a cost there, it's going to be minimal, but it's not going to be anywhere near the amount of revenue that the name change will bring into the town, because more people will want to move into Little Falls than Vader. Thank you.
Thank you for that impassioned public comment. Very good. No, it's not intended to be cross-examination. Yes. Do we have another public comment?
Judy Costello. When I get to say it. 709 A Street, Judy Costello. Along with Mike's information, I'm curious as to the paperwork that's been going around that says it's thirty thousand dollars to do from the Washington Department of Transportation, and then they share that costs fifty percent, so it'd be like a cost to the city of Vader for fifteen thousand dollars. That's the rumor that's on the street right now, just for your information, and your information, and I haven't, most of those were overlays, but sign. My comment tonight is, I had the opportunity today to go to our little happy tree limbing, grass dumping area. I would like to make a suggestion. After we have our September cleanup down there, would it be possible to get jersey barriers or whatever, and make actual sections? Because what I took down there was mulchy, and when people take their grass down there, it could be mulchy next year, that we could, you know, it could be compost next year, and then the big limbs could be over here, and whoever the dirty dogs are that put the wood and the garbage down there, I'm hoping that you don't ruin it for the rest of us. That's my comment.
Well said. Hopefully, some of those comments will end up in the Vader news article, so that it reaches more ears. But, I duly know that. So, with that, if there are no other members with public comment, let's proceed with our city business. And item number one is, the council will consider the bid document and advertisement for the Phase Two private sites sewer replacement project. And this is a continuation of council action from our last meeting, and all we need is an official motion for the council. Pretty straightforward action, so I hope that we can expedite that.
I'll put a motion up to move to authorize staff to publish the invitation to bid for the CDBG private site sewer replacement project Phase Two, and substantially the form presented, and in accordance with the CDBG publication requirements.
Thank you for that. We've had a motion to approve this resolution as read. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Is there any other council conversation or action regarding this during that? Let's put it to a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? As she's carrying. Next item, council to consider ordinance 2015-06. This relates to the findings of fact for the temporary ban of marijuana activities ordinance. This is a requirement, is one of the essential steps for the council's eventual action related to marijuana in the city of Vader. So, this is also a fairly pro forma process, so we'd invite council action.
I'm going to approve ordinance 2015-06. In order to the city of Vader, Washington, to make the adoption findings of fact to support the contained maintenance of an entry zoning ordinance on acceptance of any applications for development or business licensing for medical or recreational marijuana for users, and confirming the maintenance of the initial zoning ordinance for six months after the initial composition of ordinance 2015-05 as the effective period.
Excellent. So, Mr. Fenison has submitted a motion to approve the ordinance enumerated as read. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Segment by Mr. Schei. This is your opportunity now to provide a third fine commentary or objection.
Yes, I would like to, I talked with a gentleman by the name of Joe Keen. He's a drug counselor for the county, for Lewis County.
Wow.
And I had lunch with him, and we were discussing marijuana, and he was explaining some things to me. Now, I don't know the, all the terminology, but there's two ingredients in marijuana, is it TCB or something like that?
THC.
What?
THC.
THC, and what's the other? Alright, well, it's a good component, a bad component, and THC is a bad component. And twenty years ago, when marijuana was being produced, the THC and the, whatever the three-letter acronym for the good component is, were in equal quantities. They each put one part of each to one part of good, one part of bad. So, when people took it, the one bad was offset by the one good, and it was very little effect except the short high. He said that's not the case today. The marijuana that's being produced today produces over thirty parts of THC versus one part of the good component. And so, the long-term effects are much greater, and it affects women twenty-three and under and men twenty-five and under. And what he explained to me was that the brain, when it doesn't use cells, it evacuates those cells because they're not being used. And so, that's why it's so important for kids to get education early. It starts feeding the brain, and the brain develops. Well, when they take this high dosage of the THC, or whatever that stuff is, it shuts the brain down, and those brain cells are not used. And so, as they grow up, the brain is not using these cells, so it discards these cells, and you're permanently set back. Now, when you get over twenty-three for women and over twenty-five for men, it doesn't have that effect anymore. It's just during the developmental stage, when your brain is growing and you're learning, is when it's the strongest impact, and that's when we're having the strongest usage of it, is in teenagers. And so, it's very important for us to understand that, and I was really glad he told me why, because I, I've heard all the bad stuff, and I've heard what people say is good stuff, so, these were the facts presented by a drug counselor from Lewis County. So, his name is Joe Keen, he's located over in Packwood.
Okay. Any other comments regarding this resolution? If not, then we'll put the matter to a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The motion is carried. Item number three, council to consider the proposed employee salary schedule. This represents considerable work and effort on the part of the city clerk, who's done the research and engaged in the expenditure time and analysis to prepare this for you. I know you received it at our last council meeting. It's been reassigned, I think, so now it's ready for council consideration.
Do you want me to explain about the two different steps?
Yeah, it may be an opportune time to share some of the modifications that have been made to the motion that you've probably just received.
Kevin, if you'd like to take one of these and pass it down. The mayor asked that I prepare a different list of motion recommendations that are a little more clear, and I completely agree. So, basically, what you're looking at here is two different things. One is on page, I can remember them, did I? The second to the last page, which is the salary schedule, is called Job Classification and Salary Steps. And basically, you guys have already approved the form, so what we're looking for today, the first step would be, do you approve the numbers that are in there? If you look one page before that, you'll see the breakdown, the comparison of local city pay rates, and including some additional information there, and how we came up with these numbers that we put in. Are you missing that one on the backside of that same page?
Yeah, I'm looking for something else, sorry.
Alright. And that's an explanation of how we came up with these numbers, and so, and these are the numbers that we've discussed in meetings past, and seems to be pretty close to, between what Joe and I both had come up with. So, that's the first thing we're looking at, is do you approve the numbers to go in this pay schedule in this way? The second thing we can look at when we get to that point is the very last page, which is the big long page, and that is a plan to implement and insert the current employees into this pay scale. So, we can talk about one, and then the other, or however you want to go about talking about it. But the second item isn't really valid until the first item's taken care of, so, so if you want, if you have any questions about that, please, I apologize. I know I put this together in a way that makes sense to me, and hopefully I can explain it well enough that you guys can understand it too.
So, with that preamble, we'll open it up for council discussion, hopefully respectfully in several and sensitive ways.
Well, I have something I wanted to compare, and I can't find the second number that I wanted to compare it with, so give me a minute, I'm still looking.
Does anyone have any commentary?
Well, I've found it, you'll bear with me. On this page, you have Job Classification and Salary Steps. On the city clerk, step number seven has an amount of money there, okay? And it has an hourly rate also, twenty-four point oh eight. On the spreadsheet, on step number seven, city clerk, it has an hourly rate of twenty-two seventy-seven.
Yes, the reason for that is because the very last page, that schedule that you're comparing it to, is a five-and-a-half-year plan to get us up to that twenty-four oh eight number.
That's this one?
Yes, and I can explain that in more detail. If you want me to explain it now, that's fine, but if you look down at the very bottom of that page, the very last graph, you'll see the twenty-four oh eight on step seven. So, by the year 2020, we would have everybody up to this scale that you guys are approving.
That's assuming that we didn't have any turnover of employees between now and then.
Correct. Assuming, all the assumptions are that the employees are going to be the same, because any new employee would have to be put in the pay scale wherever they would naturally fit.
So, are we saying that, excuse me for my ignorance?
Well, it's okay.
But in 2020, like, we have employees that have been here for five years and six years. Are they going to start at the six-year level? And then next year be seven years, and then move up to that 2020?
So, if you, so, okay, I'll go ahead and explain this then. So, there's two aspects to this chart, well, there's several aspects, but there's two aspects to this chart. First aspect, the first thing I had to consider is, okay, the mayor said, how are we going to get our employees from the pay rates they're at now to the desired pay rate, assuming that you guys desire this pay rate? Okay, we're just assuming that with this chart at this point. There's a couple of things to take into account. One is, what step would they be at normally, based on their longevity here in their position? And the second thing is, the difference between the pay rates. So, if you look at this, we'll just take the city clerk, because that's the first one on the list. Step one, for August through December of 2015, is sixteen seventy-five. That's, that's the current city clerk's rate right now. So, we started this first chart, which is supposed to be for the rest of this calendar year, is what that represents. We put everybody's starting salary in there, excluding the waste treatment operator, because he's already way above the schedule, so we're not making any changes to his yet. And I can explain that more in a minute, but for now, all the three other positions are, that's their wage right now. And if we plug them into the current schedule with that as being step one, you can see how it plays out with steps, the remainder of the steps. Does that make sense? Yeah. So, what we do is we took, we just plug their salary currently, because we know their salaries are all below the schedule that we're talking about, so we just use that as step one. And then, if you see where the boxes are around the different steps and the different locations on that one chart for the remainder of this year, that is where that current employee would fit, based on their current longevity. So, currently- So currently, the city clerk would plug in at step seven. Because she's been, I've been here longer than four years, but I've only been a city clerk for four-plus years. I haven't been a city clerk for five years yet. I started as the billing clerk, so. The deputy clerk would be at step five.
So you'd be step six.
If you plugged me into this schedule, yeah, as of my current longevity. The deputy clerk's current longevity would put her at step five. And the public works laborer, you see two squares for him because in August, he would have been at step two. But as of September first, he will have hit his one-year mark, so he would be at step three now. So that's why you see the two squares there. So that's the suggested, what the mayor's suggesting that we could plug our employees in at. Now, the reason that you see the next five years, is basically what we're doing is we're taking step one at the employee's current salary and we're breaking it down. What's the difference between where they're at now at step one and where we want them to be, which is the very bottom one, which is the same as the chart on this previous page? That's where we want them to be. Basically, we've broken it down into five-year increments and just moved each one up a little bit at a time. So if you look, go back up to that very first, August through December 2015, and you go all the way over to the right, past step seven, you see there, there's more to the chart. There is the hourly increase in that particular employee's wage that would happen if they were plugged in at that step. It says how many, the next column says, "How many hours are expected, anticipated for the remainder of the year, between August to September, or August to December?" And then what that total impact to the current budget that that would have, that's the increase. Then the remaining three columns you see is which funds that that money would have to come out of if counsel decided to do that. So you can see that in that, when you look at the four thousand twelve dollars and twenty-three cents, that column, plus the deputy clerk's increased amount of fifteen thirty-seven oh four and the public works at seven forty-six eighty-one, the total impact to the budget would be six thousand two hundred ninety-six dollars and eight cents if this was implemented in this way. And so you'll see that that box there, on each line, that box, it says total budget increase. So it is going to show you how much you're going to have to come up with each year. So we showed where your employees fit now. And then each year, the whole chart goes up a few cents or, you know, somewhere between thirty and eighty cents, pretty much, for each employee. So each year, it steps up a little bit more. So for the next one, for 2016, if you see the next row across there, you'll notice that all the employees, well, the first thing you'll notice is step one. Each of those rates have gone up, which makes all the later steps go up a little bit. Each of those rates have gone up a little bit. But the employees, also, their step will be a year more ahead. It will be a year advanced because they've been working longer. So you'll see that each employee has moved up and also that the scale itself has increased. And that increase above what it currently is at right now is going, or, excuse me, the increase over what it would have been the previous year is again sixty-five twenty-three and sixty-three cents. And so you'll see that for each year, it will continue to go up. The employees will continue to advance. And the amount increased is between, the highest, I think, is sixty-five hundred and the lowest is, at the very last year, is twenty-four hundred. So that's showing you the increase over the previous year. So it gives you, that's why we made this big confusing chart, was to break that down so it's not a huge impact to the budget all at once. But still, it allows the city several years to get to that point. But it still implements a plan, so that we have a plan, it's set, and the counsel doesn't have to question and be asked, you know, every year or whatever, what we do with the employees. So does anybody have any questions about that?
I have a comment. On the city clerk, we don't have our water department yet. We don't have it back yet. And to put these levels as averages with other city clerks, they would have the billings from the water department. So that would, they would have more tasks, more duties, and more requirements. And so they're drawing the larger paycheck for that. And they'd also have more income to help distribute and pay for that. Until we get our water system back, we don't have that. So we don't have the requirements to the city clerk that you would have if we had our water department.
The only thing I would say about that is the biggest impact of water, getting the water back is going to have is going to be on the deputy clerk. Because she's the one that does all the billing and she takes on the brunt of most of that. Right now, her hours are at twenty-eight hours a week? Twenty-four, I think it's twenty-eight hours a week. If we got the water system back, that job would probably need to be bumped up to full-time. And that's where the majority of the impact's going to be. For that particular item, it's going to be on that and also the public works for waste treatment employee because somebody's going to have to run the system. And again, those people are part-time as well. So those hours are going to have to bump up. The city clerk can't bump up anymore hours because I'm already at full-time, so.
If we get the water back, I don't think you'd have to take in, have a full-time deputy clerk to get that part. But we'd also have to think about how the water revenue, a certified water man, a public employee number two. So looking at this figure here, I would say, like Kevin is saying, that we should see if we get the water system. Then we'd have to negotiate the figure here. That's just my thought, is that we can't do anything without the day because we don't have a water system. Possibly in a couple of years, we have that. Possibly we would.
I can share with my experience, having been mayor for eight years prior to the receivership of water system. When we were processing all of the elements of it, we had two full-time city clerical personnel, a city clerk and a deputy clerk. The city clerk was making more than Jill was making after five years with the city at that time. And we had two full-time public works employees, both of whom were making more than Jill was currently making. So there was almost three hundred and sixty thousand dollars in revenue flows into the city from the drinking water system. So that revenue, of course, can only be used exclusively for administrative needs of that system. So it certainly does make sense that you'll have more revenue and you'll be able to adjust the salaries commensurate with the extra duties. But if that helps. But I think what's important to note here is all of this began with the concern over the severely lower wages that our employees are getting for, that they would get from comparable cities within Lewis County. And that we have a desire to demonstrate our support for them and our concerns about the pay being so low so we don't lose these employees that are so valuable to us. These figures, I think, as you're all well aware, are just for your talking consideration. They're certainly open for your adjustment and modification and such. So I hope this gives you a catalyst for conversation.
It does.
Mr. Penison has indicated, one of his.
Well, it seems that what we're doing now, we're trying to put a system in place. Things that come along later, you've got to adjust for.
Yeah.
And so across that bridge, when it comes to it, and if this water system comes in, it seems like the expenses could be met by the income that happens coming in. That is a problem.
Yeah, I should add that we won't get the water system back unless we can show that we have employees that are ready, hireable, and in place. That's part of the understanding agreement we've gotten from Lewis County. So we can't just say, "Well, we've got two city clerks, one's part-time and one half-time, a public works employee."
Their pay has to be commensurate with their duties. And the county will look at that and say, "Well, their pay's so low, they can't be qualified." And so we would have to, that would put us in a real bad situation. So we'd have to justify why we underpay our employees if they're that qualified.
Wouldn't we just then merely adjust it at that point when that crosses that bridge?
No, because we would then be behind the eight ball because we have to move into that situation with qualified people. We can't say, "We're going to take over the system. Now we're going to find qualified people." And a negotiation standpoint, they would say to us, "Well, if they are qualified, why are they so underpaid?" And so that would put us, the onus would be on our back. And they'd say, "Well, you guys are looking good because you're underpaying people." And that doesn't look good for us on a negotiating standpoint. The other point to look at on this stuff, I don't believe in this fifteen-dollar-an-hour minimum wage stuff. But it is floating around and there's a lot of it. And based on that, we have people severely underpaid. So as much as I'm against a lot of this, we have to look at ourselves for something in the future. What?
Maybe I don't understand, but I don't see how we can make the adjustment at this time when we don't even have a working partner at this time. How can we bring the city up to, our employees up to that pay level when they don't have those responsibilities yet? It seems that we, it seems that the county would.
I think there's some confusion here. We don't need to do that. What we need to demonstrate when, say, in year two, we've had two clean financial audits, the county is going to ask us to demonstrate that we have an employee in place, not necessarily on the payroll, but who's willing to come on board and serve as our drinking water and public works and client operator. That he's got all the certifications necessary. We can't just say, "Well, we're going to use the employees we have in place." The state, the county wouldn't approve that. But we don't have to have them on the payroll and we don't have to show that we're paying X amount of money. I hope that clears it up.
Just to make a clarification about the different responsibilities between having the water system and not having the water system. The responsibilities for the water system, as far as the clerical staff is concerned, is the same as having the sewer system. It's just going to be more of it. So as far as, you know, paying for additional responsibility, it's not additional responsibilities, it's just more of the same and needing more time to do it. Because it's the exact same thing. They will be billed together, they will be, all the financial and clerical responsibilities will be the same as we have with the sewer. It's just there's going to be more of them.
Further, maybe clarify this. If in three years, we get the system back, we have to hire a full-time deputy clerk, and she was new, wasn't Diane? She didn't start at the base pay, thirteen dollars.
Right.
In itself, it'd be a challenge to find somebody, but that's. So this is still a relatively modest, if we have a new employee, it would take them five or six years to get up to. These are just average salaries.
Right, and I can vouch for the salary figures on these pages. If you remember, I pretty much put the first draft of this together. We compared dozens of like cities from around the state to collect these averages pay scales from step one through step seven. These are accurate figures for employees that could, that would expect to be paid if we hired somebody new or that decided to stay for a long time. This is the way every other city has their pay scales written. This is normal. And we're just plugging in average figures to match it. If we have issues with the current pay rates, my suggestion would be to start the current employees a little lower, if that is a concern. My original suggestion was that we start, we would start them a couple, even though they had, for instance, five years of employment, we would start them at year three so that we could have more time to work up to it. That was my suggestion. We've already found, the money's already been found in the budget to accommodate suggestion in this graph, which is great. I don't have a problem with that. But if the council still has an issue with it overall, we could cherry pick where we started certain employees.
It's real quiet.
What do you guys want to do?
Yeah, that's what this is. We've been nuts with this.
Right, I don't want to leave tonight until this is done, so. I've been all night, guys.
I have to leave at seven, ten.
Jill, I've been all night also.
All right, let's do this.
Let's do it. I'm ready.
So if we've got, if we, if we think that, because I know last meeting, a couple of people said that they thought the hour. Well, you're one of the couple of people, thought that that hourly increase was too much upfront. We could, we need to come up with a plan to fix that, unless we think that we're comfortable with that right now. Because where the money's been found, you can see it in here, where the money's going to come from, and it's not a problem. Also, these figures were dated from August first. That was my original proposal. We're way beyond that now. And this would start.
September first.
Maybe not even September first. Depends on how long it would take to put the package together, right? So these numbers are even less than this for this year.
So I've prepared on the mayor's request, some different motions and kind of broke it into two different steps. The first step is that job classification and salary chart. So if you guys are happy with that, you can go ahead and set a motion in place to do that. Or if you want to make changes to it, you can set a motion to do that as well. So that would be the first step. And the second step would be, okay, do we want to follow this plan to plug our employees into that schedule? So that's what you're seeing at that.
Jill, how long have you been city clerk?
I've been city clerk since December of 2010. That's just over four years. I'm coming up on my fifth year as city clerk at the end of this year.
So you're currently four years as city clerk. You'll start your fifth year in January, correct?
No, I am currently at four-plus years. I'll hit my fifth-year anniversary in December. That'll be five years plus a month in January. I'll hit that five-year mark in December first.
All right, and Diane, how long has she been here?
She's been here since February fourteenth of 2012. So she's been here three years plus, about three and a half years. So next February, she would hit her four-year.
Could that be the anniversary date? Okay, and then.
John started August twenty-eighth.
He's one year.
He'll be at one year next year.
So he's going to go shoot for two years, right?
September first, he's going to be at one year. Next year, he'll be at year two, which is step four.
Okay. He'll be at year two, which is step two, right? Not step four.
And if you're wondering why the waste treatment operator.
I know all about that.
You understand that, okay.
Public works laborer, yeah, that's wastewater treatment, public works. Yeah, we want to take, okay. Well, I would suggest then that Jill would start out at step four with a bump in January to step five. And the deputy clerk.
Can you hear that down there?
Did you hear me?
Hit louder.
Jill is now currently at step four. And she would bump up to step five, January one. Okay? And then the deputy clerk, Diane, is at, she's at two, but. And then, the deputy clerk Diane is at, she's at two, but... Based on that rate, I just am thinking she should be at step three. Am I wrong on that?
No.
It's just, I just think she's awfully light on her pay.
So, can I make another suggestion?
Yeah.
One thing you have to think about when you're dealing with employees is kind of, I don't know what the proper term for it is, but basically the fairness ratio. Is it fair to arbitrarily put one employee in at one step and another, in at another step and not have a, some kind of reasoning behind that's, that's something that treating each employee the same? So, I mean, if, if we're going to knock a year off of everybody's longevity, you know, that, that's something that treats everybody the same because everybody gets a year off of their longevity. That would, but if you say, this person gets a year off, this person gets a year and a half off, this person, you know, I'm just, I don't know what that's called, but I know in employment law that that's where you can run into issues, is if you're not treating each employee the same. And so, that, that would be something to think about as you're making adjustments.
Okay.
We try to keep all the employees the same.
I understand that.
We have one employee that's already at step six, even though they should be at step two.
Right.
And so, that's why he doesn't get any increases until 2018. And the rest of the employees are not even on the scale. So, seeing the difference between that employee and the other three employees, you kind of need to find a way to do it, in my opinion, to protect yourselves from any employment issues.
Well, Diane, do you say she's at two years or three years?
She's at three and a half years.
Okay. So, all right, and the Public Works guy is at one year.
Yeah, one year as of September first.
Okay, so that's the only one I was off schedule on. So, that means you would be at nineteen thirty-nine, deputy clerk would be twelve ninety-five, and Public Works Labor would be twelve thirty-four. Is that right? Does that follow? Everybody agree with that?
That's moving two employees down two steps and one employee down one step. Is that what you were meaning to do?
Well, you're finishing out your fourth year going into your fifth year, correct?
This year, yes.
Yes. Right, so your fourth, so at the end of the year, then you'll get a bump to your fifth year. And Diane, at the end of the year, we get a bump to her fourth year. And the Public Works guy would get a bump at the end of the year to his third year because he's at his...
But he would only be at the second year.
Okay, well, then he's at eleven seventy-five, then he gets a bump to twelve thirty-four.
And that means he would stay at the pay rate that he's at now.
Right, until December one.
Until, now, it's by your anniversary date. Unfortunately, that, this chart doesn't adjust for different anniversary dates, so, because his anniversary date will be September first, Diane's will be February, and mine will be December.
So, his anniversary date is this September first?
I think three weeks.
Okay, well, then we put him at twelve thirty-four because that'll give him until next, until next September.
I don't think you're understanding what I'm saying. Each, each of the, the other two employees are being knocked down two steps and he's only being knocked down one. Because if we start all of this as of September first, he would already be at step three. And if you're going to knock the other two down two, then it would knock him down two to step one, which would be no increase at this point, based on this chart.
Let me ask you a question.
Mm-hmm.
While I'm looking at this chart here, I followed it out and I noticed that the city clerk here, you have a box around step six.
Uh-huh.
Okay. And listening to what you just said there, going by the years, you would be right now at step four.
No.
No?
Because I've worked four years and about nine months.
Okay.
So, I would be at step six. Step six, if you look right above where it says step six, it's after four years of employment. So, once you've hit four years...
Got you.
You hit step six.
All right, got you.
So, in December, I'll actually be at step seven.
Okay.
Based on, you know, if you plug me in exactly where...
What's the, what's the current concern? Current concern?
I don't have a concern except clarity. And I, I'm going to move on and make a motion and let's get going.
Well, I think, I do think that we need to be cautious when we do, begin to demonstrate some, we need to be cautious when we demonstrate some, like is being inferred, some favoritism or unfairness, when you decide to selectively target, especially since you're implementing a, a, a system that shows equanimity across the board. If your concern is the amount of revenue that it's going to cost the city, then there may be other strategies that are out there that could be implemented that doesn't shift one employee into a category because that, I think that there is some credence to the possibility that you could run into some legal challenge to that strategy. I can't guarantee it, but I do think that it's, it's possible.
What, as I understand, right-hand side column there, the revenue that's necessary for these increases is listed. It says, do we have any areas to draw from?
Yeah, if you look, previous page, it says, 2015 budget adjustments for pay increases, looks like this. That shows the current fund would need three thousand dollars and, three thousand thirty-nine dollars and twelve cents in order to accommodate for those increases. And so, you see the line items listed below, clerk's office miscellaneous, animal control shelter, independent audit review. Those are the line items in the budget where the mayor said, find the money. So, this is me finding the money in the budget. So, these are line items, what was budgeted, what is still available, and then the final column is proposing to use so much out of each line item. And we come up with three thousand and forty-five dollars, which is enough, so I stop there. The street fund would need to, which is the next section, would need to come up with five hundred and twenty-two dollars and seventy-seven cents. And you see the line items there where that amount is, comes from. And we're able to come up with it there. And then also in the sewer fund, different line items. Most of these line items are things, the budgeted amount, I always try to budget, over-budget because you don't want to run out of money. It's better to expect to have to pay more and then not have to use it all. It's better than only budgeting a little bit and then going over all the time. That puts you in trouble. So, that's something Laverne taught me when she first started, when I first started on, was over-budget your expenditures. And so, that's what you're seeing here is some of the over-budgeted line items, some of the line items we thought we were going to have to pay for and it ends up we don't. We're not doing that. We're doing something different. And so, in that case, you'll see that that entire line item is being used because we're not using that money as we anticipated or originally budgeted for. So, most of them are just taking a portion of what's left for the last four months of the year. What I think is reasonable on that will still keep us covered for those line items.
So, if we adopt these steps, as far as the fairness question, they're being fairly treated because they're put in the category that their years demand.
Yeah.
And to the right, we have the revenue to cover that. So, I, I don't have an issue with this.
Let me say, in the year and a half I've been sitting up here, this is the second time the council has had to dig through the budget to find money for a pay raise. And by going to this system, it will be in place before the budget cycle every year to come. And we won't ever have to do this again because it will be in black and white, it'll go, it'll get plugged into the budget before we start setting the budget for the year in October, November. And it'll just be done and the employees will come first and we won't have to do this ever again.
So, where's the issue?
I would like to say, by having something like this in place, do exactly what you're saying, it helps the budget. We know where we're at, where instead of coming tomorrow, oh, we've got to cut the wages or we're going to raise the wages or whatever. I kind of agree that we have something in place for the next city council, the next generation or whatever, for what? It's awful hard to know what your budget's going to be from year to year.
What happens after step seven?
That is something council hasn't decided yet. One of the things that Councilor Shai recommended, that he's seen, is that employees can, the council can set up a plan, a longevity plan, which basically, that suggestion was a set amount every month the employee gets for however long they've been here. Like, I'm just going to throw out an arbitrary number, just say twenty dollars extra to their paycheck every month because they've been here over a certain amount of time. And then when they hit another threshold, then say, now it's forty dollars or, you know, so that it encourages them to want to stay past the five years. But it's separate from their, that first five years of critical learning, the job and, and all of that. It's, it's, that, that's something you guys haven't decided yet and you will have to address.
Well, if we have a system in place and you've got the increases in place, it comes to seven years, it looks like it'd be an easy thing if the budget, you know, could buy for it, just follow with it?
On this last page before the fold-out, with the vertical chart, if you read in the top right, there's the notes. And under line item B, each year during the next year's budget preparation period, the council will compare this chart with market averages of other cities and adjust the overall rates accordingly, raising all rates by X percent if needed to remain competitive. So, it'll be on the agenda, say, in November, through October, whenever the budget cycle would recommend.
That's an as-needed...
Yes, the council would say, all right, are we still market competitive? If you remember the list of all the cities, it's, that's a, that's a forum you can get through the MRSC, is that, or AWC?
AWC, yes.
Yeah, you pull that from the AWC, you can make sure we're still average. If we are average, good, we're done. If we're not, then we need to say, all right, then we need to move this whole scale equally up by one and a half percent.
Yeah.
And then you just do it and you're done.
Yeah.
You don't have to fight with all the other individual members.
So, we could say, system in place, we are in place?
Unfortunately, I have to remind the council that I have to leave in two minutes.
Well, let's put a motion on the table, somebody.
Are we comfortable with those, the final figures? These are average, market average. We only, they've only got to pull money from the budget one time this year and then next year it'll, it'll be before the budget, so. I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
I wrote the thing.
Yeah.
That, that is confusing. Use this one because I, the way I wrote it initiated, yeah, not very clear.
How is this different than this one?
It's simpler.
It's just breaking it into two different, two different motions. One where you're approving the chart.
I see.
And the second one where you're approving the plan to implement the chart.
I see.
But you can put them all together into one if you want. You just split it up to make it a little more clear. If you want to use the first one, you can. It would be the same thing, I guess.
Make a motion to approve the desired, the desired salary rate schedule, the amount proposed at the 2020 rate, and implementation of the plan to reach the new salary rate scheduled by increasing each wage incrementally from 2016 to 2020. And inserting each of the three employees into that schedule at the correct step based on their time in the position as of August first, 2015.
You want to do it as of August first? Retroactive?
On September first.
As of September first, then, 2015. That's right, this was a tad old. That is it.
You've heard the motion submitted by Mr. Shai to approve the motion as noted. Did you capture?
I did. Yep. And I've got it on recording, so we're good.
Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Oh, seconded by Mr. Flynn. Additional commentary?
Well, I think it's a good step because we can't keep faulty employees that we don't have as, you know, it's just like place. So, I think it's a good step.
Other commentary? Hearing none, I would like to echo what he's been said by Mr. Fenison. I've never been more satisfied with the city employees in my entire tenure as mayor, so I commend all council representatives present for the, your effort and your work to bring this motion to the table. And so, with that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Wow. Well done. Begin the processes of implementation. Now, let's move quickly forward with item four, to report on the street grants. And I'm going to beg the deference of our mayor pro tem, Kevin Flynn. Would you be willing to continue to...
Sure.
...direct the agenda as we work our way through it?
Yep.
This was the, another one of those top priority items. I wanted to hear what was going to be...
Street grants. So, I've been in a lot of conversation with Marset Engineering, our city engineer, and we're putting the final, the final application together this week. We should have it here at City Hall, no later than Thursday for either you or Kevin to sign. And then we'll have it postmarked Thursday and get it in the mail. And that'll be it. It's, the deadline's Friday, so we have to get, get it postmarked. There was a few extra items I needed help with, and I'm going to get Jill on that for utilities and things like that.
Would you explain to the audience what it is exactly?
So, this will be through the Transportation Improvement Board. The street grants would be two different grants. There's an arterial program. It would be redoing the section from, of A Street from 506 all the way to Fifth. So, that's the entire block in front of the post office, continuing on in front of Warden Park. So, it would repave the whole section, level the road, put the curbs at the correct heights, continue the sidewalk on the post office side from the post office block all the way to Warden Park. That would be that grant. And then the other grant is for this side of town, Eighth Street in front of the fire department, from that, that block there. Part of it would be to put a concrete pad in the road where the wheels always tear up that section of road, that we wouldn't have to worry about that in the future. So, repave the road, put concrete in front of the fire station. And then when you turn onto Eighth and go all the way up the hill to D, it would also repave that entire section as well. So, two different grants for the post office stretch of A and the section of B and Eighth.
What about the section from B to 506? Is that not covered?
That was not part of it.
This is going to be in front of the City Hall stuff?
No, this would be in front of the fire station, the fire station block, turning right and then going up the hill all the way to D.
Right up on Eighth, yeah.
And would you mention the concept of accumulating some fundage which could be matched for the grant funding for 2016?
Right. So, part of the, if you, it's a point-based system to apply for this, for these grants. So, depending on different items, you get more and more points. So, if a city puts up a certain percentage, up to five percent, you can get additional five points. And so, our proposal, which we approved last meeting, was to use the 2016 road budget And so our proposal, which we approved last meeting, was to use the 2016 road budget toward, towards that, that matching fund, which is a great idea because you can get hundreds of thousands of dollars over work for just twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars. And if we don't get the grants, we'll know in November when they come out, and we don't have to budget, we can use that road, that funding for roads as we see fit instead, just as we normally would have.
But what about the 2015 funding? Would that not be rolled into?
No, the 2015 funding would not be rolled into it.
Exactly.
That would be for paving the streets.
Yeah, it would, actually.
Are you sure?
Yes, because in order to come up with the twenty-five thousand, you have to use what we have this year plus what we anticipate for next year to get to that twenty-five.
Okay.
We might have more.
Yeah, so that was something else. So that's, that's the report of the grant. Should, paperwork should be here next week, you should be ready for your assignment on Thursday, and then in the mail.
So that's a start.
It is a start. May I commend Mr. Shai for embracing this challenge of the city of Vader and running with it.
It's competition, all the cities roll, roll in for it, so.
Did you tell them how much these grants are for?
Well, thank you. I have to, I'll have a full report tomorrow.
Okay, are we done, Joe?
Yes.
Okay, let's move on to the council's Consider Resolution 2015, thirteen, twenty-fifteen, Vader Fee Schedule. If I read this correctly, this is for our, all the fees we have. This is a listing of them, and this is sort of trying to update them.
Yep. Correct.
So then anybody comes here, they just turn to the page, and this is what it is. Something we don't have an easy way to find, anything.
If I can explain a little bit, if you don't mind if that's okay?
No, go right ahead.
So the city attorney, Carol Morris, said that before we can get a building official in place so that we can provide our own building services, we have to have a fee schedule. So we've been working for months and months and months on this and comparing the prices to different, to other local cities, and talking with our current staff, that our current contractors that we have for planning services and for engineering services, and then the person that, also talking to the building official that, that we are proposing that the city hire, and getting all that information and putting it all together into one big chart. This is not perfect. The nice thing about this is that any line item in here can be adjusted by a resolution. So if you guys, if we look at this and we go through and we say, oh my gosh, you know, as we move on, we realize we don't really need it to be that high, we can change it. The way this is set also is that it will be reviewed annually as part of the budget and see, making sure that the costs are reasonable, but also covering the cost that the city incurs for these services. If this is, this is a requirement to be taken care of before we can do the next resolution.
Right, but this also, these fees also pay for the cost of this individual we're gonna put on.
Absolutely, it will pay for it.
So that's why the fees have some time to see what might be a high fee, but it's basically the minimum.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
And, and some of these costs are higher than some of the other cities, but most of the other cities that are local, that have lower costs, do not have the same type of service that we have, and will not have the same guarantee of service, of quality of service that we will have by having a contracted building official. So we've put this together, the mayor's reviewed it, the city clerks reviewed it, the planner reviewed it, the building, the proposed building officials, everybody and their dog has looked at this and tried to make sure that it's, it's reasonable and that it will cover the cost that the city will need. And this will allow the city to be able to start enforcing their codes and, and doing their own building inspections.
Okay. Joe?
Question. So currently, if someone were to do work, the county comes in and does the inspections. So this will replace the county coming in to do all the inspections.
Correct, yes. They won't have to come here first and do our paperwork and pay us, and then go to the county and do their paperwork and pay them. They'll all just be here.
Yeah, the guy that we're talking about bringing on, he's state licensed, so we don't have to go to the county anymore, it can all be done internally.
They're doing it for years and years and years, and you'll see what I don't think that's-
And he can do electrical as well, then?
He has, he has three employees and one of himself, plus two other employees. I don't know if all of them can do the electrical, but they, the electrical, I think, has to be done through LNI.
Okay, 'cause I was gonna say, 'cause I think the, the county does not do the electrical inspections currently. The state has a person that comes in to do those.
Right, when I did mine, I had to bring somebody up from, I thought I had to bring somebody up from Calhoun County, Lewis County.
That's why you won't see electrical fees in here.
Okay.
You'll see mechanical, and you'll see plumbing, and building.
Sure.
Trying to think what else.
Do I understand that we have this, and you still have to go to the county?
No, we do not have to go to the county.
The electrical, I think, has to be, LNI has to do, has to review the electrical.
The only thing we cannot do with this would be the electrical.
I understand the old way, and it's still the new way, the electrical work has to be by-
State.
But we'll, but our building official will be able to do everything else.
Yeah, I think, I like it, but my question is, some of the stuff in here, I just think is way too expensive. I really do, for a small city like we are, and a lot of the property owners and renters, they don't have the finances for some of this stuff. Yes, there may be some of us that can afford these big prices. Water heater, eighty dollars.
The water heater, Mark Fennessen brought that to my attention here just before the meeting. The water heater is in here in two different places. It's the place where it says eighty dollars an hour, or eighty dollars for the water heater is on page five, and I think that that is the incorrect one, and we can remove that tonight, you can line item, just scratch it out, and if you see on the next page, the water heater is fourteen dollars.
Well, a water heater, I don't think, period, is that I'm coming in here and I'm gonna say I have to put a water heater. I go to Lowe's, they bring it in here, I hook up my faucet up on top, I hook up my electrical-
The electrical, the electrical on the current code is hot-
There we are.
The electrical on the current code is hot-wired, requires an electrician to put it in, which requires a permit.
These are all based on requirements by the International Building Code. They require, in the International Building Code, which our city has adopted, the International Building Code, it requires that the water heater, when it's installed, needs to be part of the permit process, needs to be permitted. It's, it's not something that we've just chosen arbitrarily, it's the International Building Code, which is what everybody uses.
Yeah, if you put in a water heater now on your own, you're probably still breaking the law, whether you're, whether the city has this or not.
Right.
And you're supposed to be doing that now, it's just we've never had a fee set for it because we've not been doing the inspections, the county will charge you for it. If you're, if you're putting a water heater in, you are supposed to be coming in and getting a building permit.
Joe, I have a question. I understand we have to put this system in in order to deal with the next, I understand that, and we're gonna change, I can explain items.
Yep.
There's some issues, there's some things about it I don't understand, it's probably just my ignorance, you know, I need to ask some questions. But the, I know, I asked Kevin, you know, before, I said, well, painting, I wanna paint my living room, and-
Painting is not a required permit. The International Building Code does not require you to do a, to get a permit for painting.
It has painting.
It has painting here in part of the valuation, so if you look on the very first page, this is actually page four of your packet here, it explains that building permits are going to be based on the valuation of the project. So if it's gonna cost you a hundred thousand dollars to build a home, that's where you would plug into this chart to figure out your permit.
Alright.
Now, the explanation including painting here is, that's explaining what things you would add up to come up with the valuation of your project.
That was my second question.
Which is, painting is one of the things you would include if you're doing a full project evaluation.
So we get this whole evaluation over here, and let's say we're looking at one hundred thousand to five hundred thousand, and the fee down here is one thousand, forty-four dollars and fifty cents.
Right.
Now, is that including these line items over here? Are these line items?
A full, a full building permit includes some of the line items, some of them have to be done separately, and I'm sorry, I don't have that answer for you, I'm not that knowledgeable yet. It's something we would have to work with the, get that information from the building official because he understands it and I don't. But my understanding is that some, the majority of them, the plan review and the structural of the building and the zoning and all that major stuff is included in the building permit portion.
Right.
My understanding is that you would have to get the mechanical permit-
Fireplace.
-and the plumbing.
Fireplace.
When those items go in, they require separate inspections, if I understand this, I don't wanna be telling you the wrong thing, but this is the way I understand.
When you put a fireplace in, you have to get a permit, and then you have to have a separate inspection.
Right, whether it's a brand-new build or whether it's remodeled.
But would you be getting this permit from the City Hall's?
Yes.
In addition to the overall to that?
Which is, which is typical, yeah. Which is what, the way it is, that's, that's the way, again, that's the way that the International Building Code is written.
It's gonna streamline the permitting process for everybody here in town.
We could-
That gets really chaotic.
We could include it all in one big bundle, but that's a lot harder to do because each project is a little different, and some, depending on what you're putting in mechanically, might need more mechanical inspection and some other ones not, so, you know, we'd have, I, I know it's more, more permits, but it's the same, if you go to the county now, the way we have it set up now, you run into the same thing. It's, that's just the way the code is written, and, and that's what, we're using that international standard.
We can always adjust line items.
And you can always adjust line, line items at any meeting, you wanna do a resolution and pass a change, you can. If there's ones that you're not comfortable with right now, if you wanna just say, I wanna mark out this one, this one, this one, we can pass the rest of it, and let's figure those out and add them back in when we have time to study it.
I'm not comfortable with this double charge on the water.
On the painting, which, where is that located, Mark?
It's a water heater, double charge, we have a double fee.
No, the water heater?
No, it's a mistake is what it is, is it's, is that it's in there twice, one with one, and one with another. The water heater, I believe it's the eighty-dollar water, the water heater one that's wrong. If you guys wanna just line item that out, and then I'll check into it and find out what the case is, and we can read it.
I can, and I can, when we remodel our house, you know, we had one large permit, which is comparable in, in fee to the, to the large building permit, and, and there were a couple other, as, a couple others as well, there was like a separate charge for furnace, and there was a separate charge for some plumbing work, some fixture work. But, but by and far and large, the, the main permit covered everything, so.
Like if I wanted to re-roof my house, that's an eighty-dollar permit, I got up there and re-rooved my own house.
It is, it is, and it's that way now.
So these are, yeah, these are comparable to what the county charges. I would have much rather dealt with a private company for all my permitting issues that I had, which were several, than deal with the county, so.
Yes.
And you guys have control over that, and, you know, if you, we use this building official and we find, you know what, we just really don't like him, he's not personable, he doesn't work well with the residents, or we think he's too expensive, or whatever, we can get a new building official.
For getting it as low as possible, because most of the citizens in Vader don't have a lot of money anyway.
That's right.
Right, which is exactly why we spent so much time trying to figure out, you know, how are we gonna cover the expenses and-
Well, this is gonna eliminate one fee because before, we had to go to the county, which this is similar to what the county was, and then you had to go to Vader and get another permit.
Right.
So it's gonna eliminate one of the permits.
Yeah, it's gonna consolidate it all in one.
Alright, a double line item here, where is that?
The water heater on page five, under flat rate fees, we eliminate that one.
It's also on page six.
And it's on page six. We need to have it in there in one place.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna eliminate the one on page five.
Yeah, keep the fourteen-dollar one for now, and then as we check into it, we'll find out what we need to do.
Okay, is anybody ready to make a motion on this?
I move to approve Resolution 13-2017, piece of real estate and ultimate application of field, reimbursable costs as tracked.
With the one amendment crossing out that line item?
Yes, and crossing out the line item in regard to the water heater, eighty dollars.
Okay, we have a motion by Mark Fennessen. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a second. Any other questions on it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, this is the second part of it, basically. This is to give, basically to give the mayor permission to go ahead with a contract, is this correct?
Yep.
So that'd be Resolution fourteen, twenty, dash fifteen, contract services for building official. Any questions on that? Any comments?
Ready to make a motion?
Somebody ready to make a motion? Go ahead.
I move to approve Resolution fourteen, dash twenty-fifteen, authorizing the mayor to execute on the on-call building official's services agreement with Townsen and Associates Incorporated substantially in the form attached to the resolution.
Okay, we have a motion by Mark Fennessen, do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Andy Wilson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All is opposed? Motion carries.
I'm sorry, that was Mark Fennessen and Joe and Andy Wilson.
Okay, subject Resolution fifteen, twenty, dash fifteen, purchase and sale agreement, proposed cancel action. Do we have any questions on that, what this is all about? This is on the property purchase? I think, what I understand, that the appraisal is back, but the EPA does not have the report back yet.
No, we're supposed to, after the purchase and sale is approved, this document is approved, and we would order that as part of the closing process.
It's almost done, then.
It's almost done.
This is the next step, yeah.
Okay, is, are we ready to put a motion on the floor?
I move to approve Resolution fifteen, dash twenty-fifteen, authorizing the mayor to sign the purchase and sale agreement for Lewis County parcel number zero, zero, seven, one, eight, one, dash, zero, zero, four, dash, zero, 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 in the amount of seven thousand dollars, and setting the closing date on or before September fourteenth, twenty fifteen.
Okay, we have a motion by Joe Shai, do we have anybody to second that?
I'm sorry.
Second by Mark Fennessen. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, final item, rental agreements, permitting and licensing. Alright, about a month ago, I brought this up, and I was told to go find out information on it, so that's what I did.
Yes, you did.
This is for the mayor, this is, whoever isn't here.
The one for the mayor and myself?
Yep. Alright, what I did, I called all the cities around, or I didn't call, I called a few of the cities around, and every city I talked to was working on it. And then I, I was told that the city of Pasco is basically the only city that has completed it and is following it, and so I contacted them, and they sent me the information, and this is what they have. And what it is, put in, they, they all put it in place to eliminate any slum landlords or just to protect tenants or renters, and also to protect the, the people renting the property, the owners renting it to an individual to protect them. And it's a licensing thing for the city so that the buildings can be inspected, and that protects the owners because the, they can't say this was in place or wasn't done because there's an inspection report that says what's done, what's completed, how, what condition the buildings are in. And it, it's basically all it is, it's set up to make sure the buildings that are being rented meet current codes, electrical, plumbing, structural, and then what the, what visibly are the, the places look like, are they clean, are they neat, do they take care of them? And so that would then be kept on record with the city, and this was a copy of the report. They have a fee schedule, a complete city application, a subject certificate of inspection, and all the examples, residential rental inspection form is a sample that goes along with it, and then the application, the application process is on the back of the- the application process is on the back of the first page. They did it fairly simple and fairly inexpensive, so the fees are not excessive, it can be done by the individuals that we have inspecting or by somebody else that works for the city or somebody with the city. Anybody can check it out. They left the option up to the city to do it, but it was just so that the buildings were, were met code, that's all it is to it. Helps eliminate the situation we had up in F Street with all those buildings that were falling apart, no windows in them, no plumbing, and just to clean up the trash. That's all it's for.
These fees listed are a little deceptive because-
Pardon me?
These fees listed are a little deceptive because once you get into the-
This is an example, this is not actual.
Yeah, yeah, but, you know, once you get down to there, by the time you get a licensed engineer and a licensed architect and all these other things.
Well, they didn't say all of those, those are options. You could do an engineer, or you could do an architect, or, or, or. It's not and, and, and.
Oh, I see. Yeah, you're right, one may choose, they're doing, one may choose one of the following.
That's right. You can, you can pick something. If you have an architect that drew plans for you, and you have a friend, you have, he can approve it. If you have a structural engineer, a Washington licensed structural, Washington licensed architect, inspector certified in the United States, anybody, you know, they can't be just the garbage man coming in and telling you you have a structurally sound building, but they're credible people that are available, and if you could call, have your building checked out and pass codes.
And they're even saying, a complimentary inspection conducted by the city of Pasco code enforcement officer.
Right.
So, it's, in this case, you could actually choose this free option.
You could go to complimentary inspection, that's correct.
It's not really free because you're paying thirty dollars, but-
Right. Something to move off that center, something for discussion. That's all.
I'm firmly against it because the fact is that we're trying to make this little city come back where it was sixty years ago when I came in this city. And every time we come around, it's always trying to dig in to somebody regarding whether it's a property owner, a person that owns rentals or what. We've got to take and do something to show people that we're trying to make this city a city. Instead of every time we come up, we wanna charge them something, we wanna charge them something. We gotta stop charging these people to get them to come into town. Period. Get this city back in order.
Well, you can look at it from the other way, Andy. You can also say, if you have inspections on buildings that are falling down and are being rented out, then the people that are coming here see good buildings and not buildings that are falling down and have rental buildings, rentals that people are not taking care of.
Kevin, we could have taken care of this one over here on Main Street, period. Eight years ago, when Mr. Smith come to office and the place was down and druggy, it's still sitting over there. This is what's been getting on me and several other people in town. It could have been taken care of, period.
Why wasn't taken care of?
I don't wanna argue about it.
Well, you can make all the statements you want, Andy, and I happen to agree with a lot of the things you say. Why weren't they taken care of? But if we have a procedure in process where buildings are inspected, then there's no questions, the building is inspected, it passes or fails, that's it. Now, this is not up for motion, this is up for discussion, that's it. But if we don't do something where people with rentals are, the buildings are not being checked, then we don't know what's going on, and we don't know what the buildings are like, and people renting are getting buildings that are not up to code, and that's, that looks bad on us. You're not asking these buildings to be Taj Mahals, you're just asking that they meet code, that's it.
Well, you, you said that something should have been done, what would you suggest? What would you suggest?
We used to have an ordinance that could have taken care of this place down here.
That was the, that was the problem, is when we tried to implement that ordinance, it wasn't sufficient, according to the attorneys, to be able to do that. This, that you just passed tonight, is the last step that we needed to take care of those buildings. Now, we can do something. You guys put together a new nuisance ordinance, you put together a derelict building ordinance that you passed over the last couple of years. Now, we finally have our own building official who is actually willing to stand up for the city and help us with code enforcement that we haven't had in the past. Now, we can do it.
What are we gonna do about the old houses up on F Street that the county owns?
Same thing, same thing. Now, we can start enforcing all these codes that you guys have been working so hard over the last couple of years to get all the ordinances and codes up to snuff so that they will withstand going to, going before hearing examiner in court. Because that's what happens when you deal with people's property, they, you know, you get people who wanna fight back, and you have to have the ordinances to back it up, and our ordinances didn't, which is why we couldn't do anything. So, you guys have worked really hard over the last couple of years and put those ordinances together. We are finally there. We can finally start implementing these codes that we already have in place, so you should start seeing things move.
Well, that's all I have, that's all that's on the agenda. It is now-